Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open up the Georgetown Planning Board, May 13th, 2015 Planning Board Agenda. First off, I'd like to welcome Matt Martin, new member.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, look forward to it.
It's gonna be...
You got the three-year term, not the five, too.
Exactly.
So, first up in the agenda, approval of minutes. And Howard, do you wanna?
Just recommend passing him to the 27th.
Okay.
Billy's not here, and Harry's not here, and he would be unable to vote on one of them anyhow.
Alright, so...
Harry's here.
Motion to...
To pass them?
Pass them?
I move we pass both of them, pass on both of them until our next meeting.
Get a second?
I don't think I can, can't, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just administrative.
Okay, second.
Alright, so motion made in second to move the minutes of April 14th and April 22nd to the, which meeting?
May 27th.
To the May 27th Agenda. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two yes, one new member? One absent, two absent. Okay. Correspondence?
We received an email from the town of Georgetown Concom Agent, and that correspondence will be mentioned during the new business.
Okay. Vouchers?
Under vouchers, we have general office for $80.58, and we have invoice from BSC Group to be paid off an escrow account and M account for Turning Leaf. For field inspection services.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
My daughter came home from college, we had to empty the vehicle. Perfect time.
I love it. I love it. Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the vouchers.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the two vouchers for a total of $6,804.58.
Second for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded to approve the two vouchers submitted in a total amount of $6,804.58. Any discussion?
If none of the other members have any...
Except you.
I would like to just look at some of Dave Varga's reports. It seems that there was a correspondence from Dave to the planning office, I think it was December 9th. It's page 39 in the PDF. We're not doing that, huh?
Page 39.
Yeah, well, it's difficult to...
Yeah.
You have to remember, it's, these are arranged in reverse chronological order. The newest of the vouchers are on the top, and it goes backwards in time. So, probably...
And there's no summary, there's no summary sheet?
Yeah, it's tough, it's unusual. And bear in mind, I believe this is the first of the sets of reports that we've received for Turning Leaf. If you start a public hearing and go back where it says "public hearing", and go back, you get a couple Civ analysis and analyses and some...
Those Civ analysis, those graphs, those charts, those are really good graphics to catch your eye, to move you to a place where it might be, if that helps.
Yep, and work backwards with me, and you'll see some Civ analysis, some action tests, three, four, five, six.
Harry, maybe?
Seven, eight. It's actually the first letter after all, just before all those Civ analysis.
First letter before the...
There's a construction Observers Daily Report, and then there's...
Alright, I apologize, I'm having a real hard time following up. Could we, could we do this?
You're moving backwards.
Could you do this and just take the time necessary? So, the last page of that group was a...
There you go, that's it, you're on it, you found it.
The very last page, okay. See, everybody might have done something different with their information.
Oh, okay, this was all stapled together.
Got it.
And I left it intact.
Got it, okay. So this is a letter, this December 9th?
BSC Group from Dave Varga to... Oh, it's now out of time.
It's a letter that stated December 9th.
I'm sorry, is that after this sheet? Oh, I'll look on, I'll look on.
Wanna look on?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Essentially, what it's saying is that they want to use a four-inch minus, because they blaffed a lot of rock. And Dave is, Dave's basically responding to them partially, and the most important thing is, they want to use a four-inch minus as subgrade, whereas we usually go for 12 inches of dense grade gravel. I don't know if this is supposed to be a permanent thing, or if it's supposed to be removed later. But the most important thing, the thing that stood out to me, anyway, is on the next page where, excuse me, on the last page, where it discusses the differences between. And then the last page is the most important part where it says, "Since this has design implications, I request that you review this with the planning board. This seems to be more than a simple construction modification."
And the date on this is December 9th?
And I think that's the part that gets me more than anything. It's December 9th, and then I tried to move forward in time with the reports and with the field observations and the reports, there didn't seem to be many, per se, reports coming after that. There are a number of field observations and field reports, but I think it's pretty difficult, because to my knowledge, this packet of voucher information and reports was received very, very shortly ago.
Very recently.
Very recently, yeah.
Yeah, I never received a hard copy of the letter, or...
Well, what, so I...
This is addressed to you. You never got a copy of that?
Hence my concern.
If it came by an email, I don't recall seeing the email until they said, "What happened?"
I would assume, too, frankly, that Mr. Varga, if this is serious, and it appears to be serious, should call that out.
Well, it's...
And not just say, "Here."
Yeah, that's the punchline. I mean, I know enough civil engineering or site engineering to be dangerous. You know, I'm not gonna get into four-inch minus dense graded crusher if that's applicable for mass DOT, standard spec, blah, 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 blah. That should come from Dave. He should just be saying that this is okay, it meets the intent of what you guys want, but not, it's not up to us.
I think what he's, if I'm interpreting it, he's saying, "This really doesn't, if you really want to use this, you have to talk to the planning board."
I don't recall any conversation.
Well, how did, so, help me with that, Harry, 'cause I'm looking at, so this is a letter that is from Dave Varga. It's addressed to Howard.
CC to?
Bill Howell.
Yep.
But then this says Dave, so then he's just copied.
He's embedded an email where he's trying to explain the benefits, or at least the lack of...
This is Bill Howell, trying to make his case.
It would appear that way.
Respectfully, Bill Howell.
Trying to make his case that...
I mean, that's, this is to Dave from Bill Howell, making the case for four inches.
Making the case that the four-inch minus is...
I don't see any comment in here from Dave Varga making a recommendation.
I believe that last paragraph, he is saying, he is, if I'm reading it correctly, that, just flip back just a bit, because that's the bottom of it, based on the IFL, above the BSA proposals, right?
Yeah, I see, he's still, he's still not taking his...
I think he's saying that you really need to go with the medium, with the 12 inches of compact medium dense grade. And...
Well, ju...
I just...
Am I reading, am I...
Well, I see in the... I see in the December 31st letter, it said, "Sean then proposed that the first six-inch lift of dense graded material would be placed, compacted to achieve 95 percent. This is about cold weather roadway placement. So, really, we just need confirmation if they did the two six-inch lifts, or if the four-inch was put in without discussion with the planning board."
It's very possible that that letter dissuaded artisan from using the four-inch, and they didn't come to the planning board because it was more bother, or it would have taken more time.
Do you want to approve the voucher? With the email out to Dave Varga, or do you want to hold off on paying the voucher until you get confirmation?
I think he earned his money, but I think that it would be wise for us to just... If he sees them doing something, requesting to do something that's not in accordance to the decision, with the decision, he should, you know, call it out.
Yeah, really.
This is an odd letter, because it is addressed to you from Dave Varga. In the middle of it, he embeds, it's like he's writing an email. He embeds an email, and then he comments on that.
I, and I guess, at this point in time, and I just, I just don't... I agree with where you're going with this, Harry, I just don't, I don't... He addresses the letter to Howard, he plugs in this discussion that Bill Howell of Turning Leaf Group, what they want to do. He then, all he goes on to say is, "The approved plans required something different." And then all he does is goes on to say...
I request that you talk to the planning...
I request that you talk to the planning board, Howard, about this. He doesn't anywhere in here say, "This is good, bad." And so he, I...
Oh, I think he's making a call, I think he's saying that...
I don't see it in the word.
You do it the way, you do it the way the specs called for.
What I need is for him to put that in words, then. I can't, I don't want to interpret it that way.
And again, it made very well within...
And I agree with what you're saying. I think, I think it does need to be followed up on, though, Howard.
Yeah.
For sure.
I will.
As far as paying all of the vouchers are concerned?
With all due respect, I think the most disturbing part about this isn't that this... The most disturbing part to me is that this all came in a very dense, information-rich packet.
Not allowing you to respond to.
Lost on Howard's desk.
And in addition...
Four months later.
In addition, this is, numbers mixed in with narrative. It's not in a spreadsheet, it's not in any kind of format that we can do any analysis. I assume that it all adds up, but I don't see any way to tell other than sitting down with Excel myself and doing that. I'm...
Yeah.
I can follow up with them, but, yeah.
In addition to what Harry's saying is, I had circled a couple of comments also, which is interesting, because it's sort of in keeping conceptually with what Harry's talking about. But, "Special instructions given and received on the Monday, December 8th, Turning Leaf comment from Dave Varga." And he says, "Both Bill and Sean were informed that the temporary shot ledge rock would have to be removed from the road bed." I guess my question is, do you want to make sure that has taken place? Special, and then on the Friday, December 5th, Observers Daily Report log, "Special instructions given and received. I told George and Sean that no open excavations were to be left open over the weekend." I mean, obviously, that's long gone, but I guess I circled these because they were falling into the same camp that Harry was talking about. It's impossible for us to react to this stuff.
That's actually the trench law, we have a trench law, local trench law.
Delivery of this.
Right, it's that, anyway, that's also building inspector, something like that.
So... Okay.
If I'm not mistaken here, what I'm seeing is, and this is, this is what I'm getting at, I guess, I'm going about it a long way, I usually do. This covers us for site inspections that started back in November? And then it only carries a screw January?
You know, we've paid for site inspection services since January.
Okay, so these are before that?
Your old stuff?
They called up and said, "You've gone 120 days past on one of our invoices. When do you plan on paying?" And I said, "I don't have an invoice from 120 days ago, so when are you gonna send it to me?" And they sent it, and here it is, so...
Yeah.
They, you're, we're, after paying this one, if you pay it tonight, we're up to date for, I think at least through March.
So what about those reports?
They were in the previous.
Oh, they were, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed two meetings, my apologies, sorry.
So, so...
I always include the reports with the invoice, so...
So then the idea would be to vote on approving or not approving the monies, and then following up with them, that just receiving this information like this isn't gonna work?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I would like to request that you build a summary sheet, because the dollars in here, it's very difficult to try to reconstruct where the $6,700 come from. It was $12.95, I would say, yeah.
Would it make any sense to have Dave drop by at the next meeting informally and just join us for a few minutes, just so we know?
Maybe not the 27th, that's kind of full now. But the first meeting in June.
Just so that we, I mean, there's a lot that goes on here, and things like this, that's almost something where that should certainly be a letter, a formal letter, that does get mailed, does get put in the mail, formalize it, but that should also be something that goes to Howard in an email with a flag.
Well, how's the rest of the board feel about that?
And SEC to the chair.
How's the rest of you guys feel about having them come in versus just letting Howard deal with it right now? I mean, I think if Howard puts it in writing, you know?
Yeah.
In addition, you know, what we're talking about, that this, the process of getting these at this point in time isn't working.
Yeah.
You know, expect it to happen differently. For me, if that's in writing with Howard, great, no reason to bring him in, no reason to spend everybody's time talking about it, but that's just me. What does the rest of the board feel?
With you, if then, if the next one comes in and it's better, then there's no, it's solved, but if it's not, then we invite them in.
We invite them in.
I would suspect that it's gonna come back the same way. The reports are gonna be the reports, and if no one else is gonna be changing, we're looking for a different format.
Well, he's gonna do that.
Yeah.
He's gonna do that in writing. He's gonna do that with a memo from Town Planner, on behalf of the planning board, that, you know, this isn't working, they're looking for him to come within a certain time that we have, that we can respond to it, and...
Would it be beneficial to have a monthly summary?
I think that it would make sense of this number.
A monthly summary of the running totals?
Not so much, I'm not as concerned about...
Of the work performed. Invoice number, amount, date.
Sure.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not as concerned about the invoices as I am about the communications to the board.
Understood.
Yeah, that's my, that's my big thing. The invoices will always square up, billable hours are billable hours.
So, I think what you're asking for, Howard can, if he can...
Right?
Alright.
If you can wordsmith that, good luck to you.
Yeah.
You feel alright doing that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. So, and then I think, you know, having them just put a running total as part of their submittal, of the hour, of the tally sheet kind of thing.
Okay.
That would be easy enough for them to do.
Yeah.
He's had a lot, and I distinctly remember seeing one where he was there for several hours, but there was no report. And it just said, "No report generated."
Did you see the page after this one? Go to the front one.
The breakdown?
Yeah, it gives the hourly report of the work.
And I'm not interested in necessarily the breakdown of, I'm not gonna micromanage the dollars to spend unless it's egregious and it comes popping out, but... Aren't you just talking about a basic tally of, you know, you got a $10 contract, you've billed two to date, here's a bill for four, your total current billing is six, leaving a balance of whatever?
Pretty much, yeah. Actually, I didn't see it. This was sitting after the WV Mason, and...
So, alright, so let's...
So this, yeah, no, this is the idea, this is fine.
Okay, good, so let's all then bring it back, discussion, more?
We get these monthly, it'll be a little better. It'll be a little better if we get these monthly.
As opposed to, you know, every three months?
Four months down the road.
Okay.
Every three months.
Quarterly, I agree.
Quarterly varies, it really does.
Monthly, a lot of data.
Yeah.
Alright, so, bringing it back to voting to approve the vouchers, we had a second, right? We had discussion, so, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? You don't vote?
I said aye.
Oh, you did, didn't you?
I'm sorry.
Alright, so we had everyone yes, one absent. Okay. That threw a chink into the schedule.
Sorry.
These things happen.
I'm with you. Good catch, though, Harry, on that.
It was a good catch.
That December email, I didn't get the package, but I would have missed that.
You would have picked it up.
So, public hearing, Howard?
Do you want to open the public hearing for 269 Central Street?
Yep. Now you have a motion to, I'd like to open, not a motion, I'd like to open the public hearing for 269 Central Street Noonan Site Plan Approval. For discussion of...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Are you looking for that motion?
Yes, please.
I'm looking, I'd like to open the continuation of the hearing for 269 Central Street.
Second?
Second.
Been motioned and seconded to open and continue the public hearing of 269 Central Street Noonan Site Plan Approval. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We received, the planning department received a letter from the Moore and Cameron Group, addressed to the planning board. They're just asking for a continuance through the next regularly scheduled meeting to allow the third-party reviewer to complete their review. And that would be the meeting of the 27th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue 269 Central Street with basically an approval to 4/22/15.
4/22/15?
4/22/15?
For next meeting, 4/22/15.
5/27.
Oh, 5/27. Oh, okay.
Down the line.
We're reading next meeting.
Down the line, yeah. Second?
Second.
So, motions are made, to be seconded to... By, approve the letter for continuation of the public hearing to the 5/27/2015 planning board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of public hearing 269 Central Street, new business. Chapel's Hills, OSRD informal hearing. Gentlemen?
The planning office received a letter and supporting documents regarding a proposed open space residential design application. And they made a request for a pre-act in accordance with our OSRD bylaw. Come and meet informally with the planning board, introduce themselves, discuss in brief the application that will be coming to the board. Those full-size plans were distributed, they consider a yield plan, an OSRD option one, and an OSRD option two.
Mr. Chairman, again, my apologies for coming in late. Did we do the minutes and the correspondence?
We did the correspondence, we moved the minutes to the next...
We did the correspondence.
Yep. And they'll be included, they're included now as part of this...
Excellent, thank you for discussing.
Yep. Gentlemen, floor is yours for anything you might want to start with or introduce as part of this informal hearing.
I'm Paul Maushorn, Maushorn Associates, professional engineers on our stone in Massachusetts. This is Fred Fahy, the developer of the project. This is a, Chapel Hill is a 123-acre site between Ballpate Road and 97. And what we have here is, as Howard indicates, three drawings. The first one's a yield plan. This is a plan showing how the site could be developed by extending Chapel Hill to 97, and subdividing the lot into, there's two acres, it's two acres only, 80,000 square feet only, 20 feet of frontage. And it shows that they yield potential for 30 lots as a conventional subdivision plan. I should point out, before I go too far, that the wetlands on the site were delineated in a, auto research delineation was issued by the Conservation Commission back in 2000, follow. That was good for three years, so it expired in 2007. The intention was requested, but it wasn't given, so it did expire, but even though this has expired, it's a pretty good representation of what's, what's on the site, so we have yield to handle on that. So this is the yield, this is the yield plan showing 30 lots going from Chapel Hill all the way up to 97. Then we have two options for our open space residential plans. This is the one we prefer, is option number one, that's why it's number one. Where to come in from Chapel Hill Road, and then terminate the public set here and here, just to avoid getting into conservation areas. So we state basically how to walk conservation areas almost entirely for the project. Maybe some drainage areas might get involved, as far as the roads and things of that nature, totally have the conservation areas all together. And the second option would be, and this would require, obviously, the, the waiver that the public set is required. The second option would be, if you were all the way through to 97, again, 30 lots and both options, one and option two. But clearly, we think, looking at all the, you know, turnovers and all the benefits, we think this plan has a lot of benefits, both for the developer and for the town of Georgetown. If we construct a road through from this end to that end, it's likely that there'll be a lot of cut through traffic, because this kind of cuts, it kind of cuts the town, you know, from Ballpate down to, what's it called, Central Street, or 97 to Central Street. Kind of makes a direct connection through there, you have a lot of traffic going through there, that could be avoided. But again, this is what we would, you know, we would prefer, we think is the best way to go. I should point out that in both open space plans, we vastly exceed the requirements for open space, it requires 60% open space. Both of these plans have over 80% open space.
How much?
One, this first plan here has 100.25 acres, plus or minus, 81%. And the second plan's got 104 acres, 84%. So, and also, another benefit of this plan, too, is the open space is contiguous all the way around. It's not being subdivided by a road, it's all, all the way around. So, really, in a nutshell, that's what we have, you know, to put before you. We're looking to get some feeling from the planning board as to, you know, what you think would be, something you might like to see us go forward with, before we dive into the real, you know, heavy engineering and things of that nature.
Alright, so thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in for the preliminary informal kind of meeting. I guess I was gonna see if anybody in the public wanted to ask me questions.
They love it.
And if they don't look like they're interested.
Just to remind, the board...
It's not a public hearing.
Yeah, not a public hearing, and it wasn't noticed, so this is informal.
Yep. But, so, I'd like to go around the board, and it's not necessar, it's not about specifics, it's about, you know, general responses to help the applicant know, you know, some of the thoughts of the planning board, and it's an informal meeting. So, I'm not gonna start with you, let you have a crack at listening for a while, unless you want to start.
Well, the one thing I would bring up, being very sensitive to this issue, having been served on the Affordable Housing Task Force, is I wanted to know if you've had any opportunity to think about the, and I know we're very early in the process, but the town's affordable housing requirements with the development of this size, that would apply in a development of this size, I would presume?
10% minimum.
10%, yeah.
I think we've just had preliminary talks. We've been in a couple of times with the planner and conservation agent, but I believe it's 10%, and it's either, in this case, it would be three units, we build three units on site, which we could do, or make a, whatever, a contribution to the affordable, which we're aware of that, yes.
Okay, alright, great.
And that's part of the plan, that would be part of the plan. I do have a question, is that a part of the conventional plans, too, or just on a special permit?
Yeah, standard subdivisions, as well.
The unique part about affordable housing on an OSRD is that the developer can get a bonus from the yield plan. You can actually get more housing, more units.
I don't think we've actually did that in this case, though, did you?
We didn't do it.
No.
You did.
Right. That was my only comment.
Good comment, okay. Bob?
These are mostly half-acre with a couple of larger...
Without a sense, for example, that this thing is gonna fly. I think what you're hearing is people aren't gonna support it. Or I'm only speaking for what I think I'm hearing. You're not gonna get support from the planning board without a sense of this being understood that it's, that it's gonna work.
So if we come in with a conventional, that changes, that changes that then. Because we come in with a conventional plan, we're not asking, we're, we're coming in with a conventional plan. That doesn't even have any better, I don't think, do you need conservation approval for a planning board approval?
If you don't have any wetland impacts, then you don't need conservation.
No, I'm saying would you, if we brought you a definitive, you wouldn't prove it, you wouldn't say, "We can't, we can't hear this plan and have hearings on it because we don't think you can go out the other end." That would be at our own risk.
Right.
So, but on an open space residential, you're saying because of the special permit factor, you can, you can do that.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on it. I wasn't aware of that.
If I could ask a question, conceptual, conceptually, if we go to the point that we convince the planning board, we could go out to cross the wetlands and go out to the other road, if we go out to that point, would the planning board detain, you think you would detain this kind of a plan?
Well, before we get there, let me just see if Harry, you, did you have anything you wanted to talk about?
It's generally, just, just to go with where you are, I, I don't believe that this board can get to the stage where we've even hit that first milestone, which is determination of yield, until we know that you can get across.
Right, but I'm saying, my question was-
It's a very unusual parcel like that.
My question was, conceptually, if, if I somehow proved to you that I could go out to ninety-seven, either by an order of conditions or a court, or just something, I could somehow prove to you and I convinced you that you were convinced that I could go out to ninety-seven if I, if I had to. Then, at that point, we'd like to know, with the planning board, do you think you'd prefer to see a plan like this where we can avoid, say, we've, we've established up thirty lots now, where we can avoid the wetland impacts by getting, getting waivers to cul-de-sac lands? Is that something that, I mean, is that something that's totally out of left field, but never getting a million years, you know, or something you guys would consider it being a reasonable way to develop this piece of property? That's kinda what, the question I'm asking.
Okay, so, hold that question. I'm not trying to deduct it.
All right.
Did you have anything other than that to talk about then, that you, you can't get there until the yield plan?
I, I can't get beyond the yield plan at this point, so it's tough for me to say anything else.
Understand. So, I think the only things that then I just wanted to put on the table. So, I think Harry was pretty clear about the history of the site.
Mm-hmm.
You know that probably better than anybody. The delineations of the wetland, and this is a CONCOM jurisdiction thing, you know that that needs to be done again. The, the review of the crossings, we've now talked about, that's pretty clear, that that's also a conservation commission issue that affects the yield plan. As, I, I, for one planning board member, would be very interested in just making sure having our technical review agent review the yield plan to make sure that it meets all of the requirements necessary. And that's something that, as the special permit in the OSRD allows us to ask the applicant if they would entertain that. Is that a, an M account then?
Yeah, it's an escrow account.
An escrow account, to pay for our technical review agent to review the yield plan, to tell us that in fact, "Yeah, planning board, you're all set. It meets everything that you need on this thing." So that's just a question. Can leave for that for a second. Chaplain Hills, length of that cul-de-sac is, isn't, is a hurdle. There's nothing here, I don't think, that you don't know. Plus, it's not a public road. I think you know that.
Yeah, we're working with the estate of the original developer to get control of the road.
So, when I put all of those things in, into a basket, I have a question about the yield plan being the right number as to what you've come up with for the other, for the other plans. That being said, when I look at the two plans, and this is getting a little bit more of a problem than what you're looking for. But what I, what I can say is that, and I'm only speaking for one member, and this is a preliminary hearing, the last thing I wanna hear coming back is, you guys said, "Do this."
No.
I'm just going on record, 'cause it's happened before. Personally, for myself, the idea that you have on concept one, I, I respond to as a planner more than concept two. For the reasons you did talk about. The, not a through street, although, as soon as that came out of my mouth, I said, "Maybe a through street is, for, for a larger circulation system is actually good engineering." I, I don't know. But as far as, skip the circulation part, as far as the way you've, you've lumped it together into a smaller grouping, that is the one that, that I would lean towards if I had to pick between one of these two, assuming all those other issues are resolved. And then the only thing I would add to that is that the lots are all, by nature of the process, they're all very similar in size. And, and I would hope that when they come back, if it ever gets that far, that the housing could be done in such a way that it's not gonna seem like a cookie cutter, you know, same house, same location, just paralleling the street, same setback. So that when you drive through all of this woodland land, you've just then got this row of housing going down. Now, that's jumping way down the line as far as design is concerned, so, but that, that's the best that I can do to respond to the, to the two plans for just one person on the board. We have one member who's not here right now. But, so I, I don't know, I, I think there's just a lot there in terms of those issues we're talking about, that what I'm hearing is that we're gonna wanna get some feedback from Conservation Commission as to where they are and all of this.
Well, I got an email from a few weeks ago that he preferred, Steve preferred option one. And I think he says that in his letter. I mean, honestly, if we, if, if, if we went that direction, the board had an interest in option one, it would kinda make the second point moot about the crossing, 'cause we wouldn't need it.
That is correct.
So it's kinda, it's like, we'd be doing all exercise for, again, we believe, and I've done probably forty subdivisions. I've built golf courses, I've done crossings of every kind you can think of in Massachusetts, and I believe ultimately we'd be able to cross that. It's not even that big of a crossing. It's actually pretty smart. It's within the limited project. DEP will a lot, would allow it. It's the home rule.
Five thousand square feet?
I believe it is, yes.
The home rule is?
It's the home rule by law that you have, that doesn't, well, they have a lot of jurisdiction. It doesn't say they would never, they would never say never, but-
It doesn't actually technically say that they're not allowed.
Right. It's, it's a discretion.
It is the strictest wetland regulations in the Commonwealth.
I too prefer the halfway because of the reasons we said. I do believe it'll be some type of feeder road. It'll be more traffic there going through than if it didn't go through, let's put it that way. People that, the only people that would have business going in that project if it stopped would be the people that live there. If you put a road that goes through the central street, even if it's ten people a day, it's ten more cars a day that are gonna cut through to get over to town hall, or shortcut to ninety-five, or, you know.
The competing interests too, as you know, you know, getting pushed and pulled from different interest groups, but I don't know how fire and police would respond to one-way in over such a long length.
Right. I think we'd, we'd have to have a department head meeting, but I think that's part of your process of, once we get the-
Once you, once you-
Yeah, once, we really-
The concept plan, it gets distributed to all the town departments, and that's when the feedback comes.
And then I would imagine there'll be some type of department head meeting at some point. Do you have those? Where all the-
Like an idea?
Yeah, where I'll sit down and, and meet. Because I agree, I think we could, there's other options. We can widen the road. The twenty-four-foot pavement, we could go to-
How long would it end up being from Chaplain, from, from bulk?
It's long.
Chaplain Hills, call it twelve hundred, and I'm just eyeballing, it looks like another twelve hundred.
This is twelve hundred here. It's a little more than another twelve hundred.
So it would be a twenty-four hundred foot road, would that-
Under three thousand.
Have the distinction, oh, and you have the, the cul-de-sac coming off. So it would probably be a three thousand foot road?
Approximately, yeah.
Maybe.
And would that, like, ring the bells for the longest road in Georgetown?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, no one, no one's-
The longest dead-ended road in Georgetown.
No one?
Yeah, I know, we're not disagreeing with that. We're just saying that, just because, it, does it make sense though? And I guess that would be part of the input you get from the people that already live in Chaplain, when we go to public hearing, what, you know, what they prefer to go through, or, and I know that's not, it's your decision ultimately, that's why you're here, to represent the whole town. I just think keeping the open space contiguous, you know, not putting a road through is a smarter land planning than just 'cause we can go through, go and through. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna deny the fact, it's gonna be more difficult going through with conservation. There's more, there's more impacts within the buffer, and we have that one crossing. But it is within the limited project. And ultimately, you know, we have a land use rights and things like that too, that, that would, would come up.
They have to grant the crossing if you have no other way to get in.
And I've been kicking this thing around for two years because of that issue, and you can ask Em and Steve, I've been trying to avoid the whole, you know, the crossing issue. But if it comes to that, it comes to that. I mean, that's what we do for a living, that's how, you know, my, my company makes money and we work, and people get new housing and things, it's, you know, it's, I think, considering the size of the project, one limited project crossing for all that is, is minimal. Most towns, it wouldn't even be a, I wouldn't even give it a second guess. But because I've been advised in the, in meetings with them, that it's gonna be an issue.
Welcome to Georgetown.
Well, that's fine. That's a nice town too, and I can understand. That's, you know, that's your, that's, those rules were put in place by town meeting, I would imagine, and that's, that's fine. Everybody has their town rules now.
Well, the, I just wanna raise, discussing of this wetland crossing, the other aspect is, once you get the wetland crossing, then you've got the right-of-way for where the rail trail is going in. And I don't recall ever seeing definitively if Farage ever got-
We, yeah, he bought it, we have it.
To pass over the, the-
He bought it from Mass Electric, yeah, and he, and gave them back easement rights to it. So, but he kept the right to pass the road over it, so that was all squared away.
Say that again.
What, once, once you get up to National Grid right-of-way, where the, where the future multi-use path is going-
Which is where?
Is, is, is right there, right, right where Brook Street ends. The, the, the original property owner, Farage, purchased from National Grid a little piece of land, or purchased the right to pass and repass, so-
Actually purchased the land, right?
Purchased the land.
He owned it. He owns the underlying land now, and then gave back Mass Electric their pile easements.
So he owns that little section in fee.
Square.
And then once you get past that, if you recall Whistle Stop, one of the whole issues that happened with Whistle Stop is that they couldn't get Brook Street widened to subdivision standards, and so there's been other previous ideas of being able to punch out straight to ninety-seven, which land is under separate ownership. So that's-
Actually, we have, we have an option on that.
Okay, so that's, so it's good to know.
Don't know if we needed it or not.
What I think would be beneficial to the board after hearing all this is for the applicant to summarize all these different elements. Yes, we know about the wetland crossing, these are our ideas of how it's gonna be pursued. We have an option on the punch-out to Brook Street. We understand the crossing. So you can describe to the board a little bit more finer details. We're currently engaged with the state that owns and fee Chaplain Hills. So the board knows that these would need to be done, whether you go down the conventional or down the OSRD. And then you can engage Larry Graham for, for the, the peer, to say these things will be needed, and then you'll be able to see between the two.
Can I just ask, was the, the, the fee in the roadway reserved?
Are you talking about the existing Chaplain Hill?
Yeah.
That was, the process, well, it's owned by the original developer. He, he was required to file, file a warrant, a town meeting, to have the town take it over. He passed away somewhere during the process.
Did he reserve the fee though?
Yes, he, he, the people that live on it have a right to, to pass and repass that live on Chaplain Hill, but he still owns the fee.
So it's not derelict fee at this point?
Oh, no, it's still there, it's still there, there.
Still owned by the corporation.
I would believe so. That's what, you know, that's what my attorneys are telling me. That the, the way to clean it up is to get them to prepare a quick claim deed, either to my company or to the town held in escrow, to go to town meeting with it. All the work is done, I, I believe you took the bond on it. They called the bond on Chaplain Hill, and the bonding company paid it in.
Yeah, we pulled it.
Yeah, yeah, it's been done.
And I think everything's done. It looks great. I mean, I don't, I didn't see anything there. But my understanding is they absolutely still own the, the company, the developer, J.W. Jones, I believe, or something like, I don't know the name, I don't think, I'm not sure if that was the name of it. Still retains the, the other fee. Because always, when we always do projects, we retain the fee until we create a quick claim deed, bring it to town meeting with a warrant, and have whatever town it is vote to accept the road.
Right.
Why, do you know something? Well, I know. I thought you had some information that we didn't, that we didn't know. We've done a lot of research on it.
Farage had, I just remember things from years ago, and-
Well, that's probably, yeah.
Of him owning the fee underneath that roadway, and I, I remember-
Farage didn't own it. He sold it to the, when they deeded the lots to the kid that built the houses.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about the, for the, for the rail trail.
Oh, we have a deed to that, yeah, there, I have the deed to that. He did get, he did buy that one. He did a lot of work on that Whistle Stop. I mean, the engineering was immense, how much engineering he had done.
Oh, yeah.
Those were full set.
It was a lot, yeah, it was so far.
They were done.
And then it just-
They were done.
He says the economy, he withdrew it. I'd never seen an actual denial on it, but I believe he withdrew.
Yeah, there is a denial.
He withdrew with us.
Oh, withdrew.
He withdrew with us.
So just to be clear, the submittal of the open space residential development layout requires more than just the dom, the roads and the dimensions of the lots it re, it requires? And it has to be, that there's a possibility that will or will not pass conservation, is that part of it?
No, no, I don't think so. I think what you have is the concept plan, and that's what it's here for discussion. But the concern is, is the viability of the yield plan that determines the concept plan. And it just sounds, I'm getting from the board, that they wanna know all aspects of the yield plan that would need to be done in terms of waivers or filings and what the restrictions are.
And I think I would add too, that obviously, with the information that's put on the table, then it sort of becomes a, at your risk of how you wanna proceed.
Well, we would need a, we would need a decision from the board on which direction they want us to go, whether it's all the way through or it's not all-
Fred, I don't think it's up to the board. I, I think eventually it's up to the applicant to decide for themselves.
Yeah.
Well, the special per, isn't there a preliminary special permit, like a preliminary stage special permit, that gives you the confidence to move to the next level? I thought I read that in the bylaw.
Planning board may grant a special permit for an OSRD.
Call the concept plan an R by, and remember, that's, that's, that's a very tweaked cluster development OSRD bylaw. Not, there, there's a lot of things that were very, in the model of OSRD. If, if you're familiar with that one, and it sounds like you probably are.
I've done, are you talking about, your, your bylaw is different than other towns?
There's a lot of subtle-
I've read it, I mean-
Important differences, but it looks a lot like the look and feel, but there's a lot of subtle differences.
I think the way I understand it, and when I read it, was that the ultimate decision is ours. We can decide to go convention no matter what.
Absolutely.
But I think that by this process here, the intention was to come to the planning board and just kinda feel for what the planning board would prefer to say. And, you know, we would take that information back and say, "Well, you know, do we wanna do what the planning board prefers, or what we prefer?"
Or do you wanna proceed at your risk when you hear the planning board raising a lot of questions?
Right.
Uh, well, it's always risk in this business. I mean, that's the, that's, this is, but I, I, I think we would, if we don't, if, if the boards aren't interested in an open space residential, then I would just go conventional. So, and, and I understand, the board can put any conditions they want on their conceptual approval, subject to, you know, you gotta get an order of conditions on the crossing. I mean, that's all fine, you can load it up all you want, but I would not wanna go the stage two of the development costs without, unless, I would do that with a conventional plan, but if you wanna go open space, I'm gonna need something more than, I'm gonna need something.
I don't think the board can give you that something.
Not tonight, obviously, but I mean-
I don't think, I don't think-
What do you mean by something?
Well, isn't, isn't there a preliminary conceptual approval you normally do?
Yeah, yeah.
We would, we, okay, Fred, we're gonna, we want you to go with this halfway road, or we want you to go with the blow-through road, 'cause we want the open space, or we don't want open space, just go conventional, and we're not interested in either plan. It just, you know, I understand totally what you're saying. I'm fully aware of the, of the wetland crossing issue with the Conservation Commission. I'm prepared to deal with them on that. So, I just don't think we're gonna, I'm not gonna deal with them on that and then have to come back and try, you know, and get, it's sort of reversed. Normally what you do is you get your planning board approval, then you go to the conservation. That's the normal process that we do.
If I can, if I can just give you a little friendly advice, in Georgetown, make that a parallel, not serial. Don't do it sequentially. Do it parallel.
And no, and I appreciate, we've asked though, and, and some, and some of the informal meetings we've had with them about maybe submitting a little piece of it and getting their, like, we could just submit the piece of the crossing and say, "Can you approve this for us?" They won't. They want, they, oh, we've been told Steve says they want the whole, the whole ball of wax.
I guess what Fred's saying, and maybe if I'm saying it wrong, stop me, but in order for him, if he was to decide to go with an open space plan, he needs to kinda know that, that the board's in favor of an open space plan. In other words, if he doesn't know that, then his, his only option's gonna have to be to go to, go to a conventional plan. 'Cause he, you know, that's only, in terms of planning board, that we know we have a right to do, to a conventional subdivision plan.
Well, I think, and I'm only speaking for myself, I mean, I think as a concept, I'm in favor of being part of, you know, when we drafted that OSRD and made tweaks to it, I, I'm in favor of the OSRD as a concept versus your traditional subdivision.
I presume that to be the case.
That's as far as I can go, though. That's as far as I can go. And I, and I'm reading under the, I'm reading in the ordinance, the pre-application part of the process, and nowhere in there do I see anything that says, you know, it's just, this pre-application is about trying to just give you our feedback, and there's no, the next step is the design process.
Is the application.
Is the applica, that's the next step.
Of the concept plan.
And that's the at-risk part, which obviously you know about.
And then from there, that's where you demonstrate to us how the yield plan is actually the yield plan, and we determine the yield, the yield. But at this point, I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing a yield of one.
But you're basing that on, on a conservation crossing.
I'm basing that on the fact that you, it's, it's, I, I'm basing that on the fact that I don't see it reasonable that you will get through it.
And, and, and-
Reasonable according to our regulations.
No, and this is, and he's just one member.
I know one, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, I'm not, I'm not debating, I'm trying to understand it. You're, you're basing on the fact that you don't think we can, we can cross the wetlands, that's what you're saying, for, for you.
I, I, let me say, I would be very surprised if you got an order of conditions that said that you would get that crossing. And that's just me. I mean, that's, I was on the Conservation Commission so long ago, I, I think there may be one person on that board that was, was on when I was back there, on that, that's still on.
But, so I guess what I don't understand, and this may be my interest to this board, but, so, what they're showing here, it doesn't talk about the punch-through though.
No, this is a cul-de-sac.
Right.
The issue is a long, long cul-de-sac.
So I don't, I guess I don't understand where you-
Process.
How, how you say it's a, it's a yield of one because of the, the, the wetland issues, when this is not talking about punching through at all.
Right, but if they don't punch through, they can't do any more than one lot, because Chaplain Hills' road is twelve hundred feet. And they would need a waiver from this board to extend that road, that length of road, so they don't have any frontage.
So you're saying, without the punch-through, the, 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 the road with the cul-de-sac is too long? Okay, I got you.
So it's, it's, it's sort of like a, like an appraisal. You don't make any grandiose hypotheses. And one of the grandiose hypotheses that I could see would be presuming that this board would grant a waiver to extend a road that's already twelve hundred, twelve hundred feet long, when we're under no obligation to do so. I mean, I, I'm not seeing any benefit to the town. I'm not seeing a, a football field there, or an open space field there.
Oh, you're seeing a hundred acres of open space. On the, on the open space residential, you're not, on the conventional, we don't have to show any benefit because it's conventional. But on the open space residential, we're showing an excess of a hundred acres of contiguous open space. That's a huge piece of open space in any town. And I know you have a lot of open space in town, but that's, that's still considered a good piece. And in fact, we had talked with the Essex-
County Green Belt?
The Green Belt, and they were interested, but when they talked to Steve, he said the Conservation would be interested in keep ma, owning it and managing the property. So they deferred to him, but they were interested in taking the open space, 'cause it's, it is a good piece of open space. But I know what you're saying, it, it, you know, we, what if we came in with a, a yield plan with no punch-through, it stopped before that wetland, and said, "We're gonna require a waiver for this." Technically, that would be, that would eliminate that issue. It doesn't mean you would, in theory, it doesn't mean you would grant it, but we would get us, it would bring us to a point where we'd say, "We're going with this, and we're gonna be asking for a waiver." I mean, lots of times, boards reject, you give them the waiver list with your submittal, and they'll reject half of them, but you still get the process going.
At, at, at your risk, yeah?
I just don't know how we're gonna get anything from Conservation to satisfy you without doing the whole plan. I really don't. And, you know, and doing, doing this is for a living. They're gonna say, "What are you, what are you asking us?" You know, "We're asking you if you'll let us cross this, let, you know, this limited, which is norm, is considered a limited project." And they'll say, "Well, what, what, what do you have here? Where's your road? Where's your profiles? Where's, where's everything?"
I think what, I think what they would do, and I, 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 I put a big caveat in that I don't wanna talk for the Conservation Commission. But I'm guessing they would do something similar to what we're doing, which is they would talk to this in an informal way, based on the drawings you have at this point in time. And they would share with you as a board what their concerns are, just as we have. And that's probably as far as they would go, based on the level of drawings.
Right, they're not gonna say or deny you. They will never say that at this point in the game.
So, so it's gonna, I'm afraid what you're looking for, you're just not gonna get right now. I, I think it comes back to where you either, it's, it's, it's gonna come back to you guys, where you just need to, you're, you're hearing all the information, and-
Their concerns and-
And whether you wanna go ahead or not is-
I'm, we're gonna go ahead, absolutely, there's no doubt. This is going forward, but it may just be a conventional plan. I think that would be sad, but we have to, you know, we, it, it, it's gonna be a substantial investment. And honestly, honestly, the lots are worth more conventionally than twenty thousand square foot cluster lots. The three-acre lots are worth much more.
Yep, no question about it.
But, doesn't mean it's a better project, 'cause you have three-acre lots. I, I like open space. I've done projects in Andover where we deeded a ton of land over to the River Shed Group in Den Rock, it's called Den Rock Park now, but it's, and it's well enjoyed, and it turned, and we had small lots, and it turned out to be a huge home run, a nice project. And I was trying to kinda do something here. That's why I contacted the Green Belt people, and they were interested in taking the land. But if, if we're gonna spend the money and pull the trigger and go to court to fight something, we're gonna fight, I'll fight the conventional plan.
Let me ask this.
So, you gotta, you gotta do.
If we went to Conservation, had discussed the similar ones like we have in with the planning board right now, and we were to get them to support, let's say, support this plan, 'cause they prefer not to cross the wetlands, is that gonna be enough to get you over the hump on the, on the yield plan basis? I mean, they're not, not give us an order of conditions without us filing a full-blown defense of the plan.
No, part, part of, part of accepting the yield plan as a legitimate yield plan is, is it a legitimate yield plan? And if Conservation Commission is not gonna give you that crossing, but-
Yeah, in, but, like you said earlier, kinda circling back, I mean, the, the whole aspect of the pre-application hearing is, is for the applicant to get an understanding from the board of what the concerns are. And, and the concern is, is that the yield plan is not a viable one. They, they can still proceed. There's the option for, that I suggested, that the applicant provide just a letter in this preliminary aspect, explaining what the benefits of the yield plan, the drawbacks of the yield plan, the benefits of OSRD, the drawbacks of the OSRD. And you can still retain Larry to give his impression of, of what would be required to permit and review the conventional or, or the OSRD. But in the end, it is up to the applicant when they do their formal application, so. I'd suggest to the board that you already have a feeling of, of what con-coms stances from the agent, and, and through the email, if you want something more formal.
Well, I would encourage, I would encourage the applicant to talk to Conservation Commission as a committee, if, if they, you know.
In a, in a pre-application informal format.
In a pre-application informal format. Can't hurt.
It's part of the process, one way or the other, conventional or OSRD, you, you still need a wetland delineation. You still need to go before the court hall, regardless of which way. It sounds like you're, you're determined to go, and this is-
Yeah, no, we have to, we'll go file, we'll, we'll flag it, and get an, we'll file an ANRAD on it. We'll, we'll do all that.
During that ANRAD process, I mean, you're gonna have ample time, months, to talk to the, to the CONCOM and come before them and get their feelings on things. And during an ANRAD, naturally, you're not required at all to give them any idea of what you're going to do. But I've always found it beneficial that if you point out to them that, that you are thinking of a crossing, that it's gonna be necessary. You'll get some feedback.
So I, I know it's not what you wanna hear, but I think it's all that's gonna happen.
Sounds like you're up at the log hall anyway.
Yeah, we are. I mean, it's something, you know, like you said, it's been, the can's been kicked around for years and years. It sounds like it probably, at this point, you know, for our, our needs, probably we go, we'll go conventional, I think. Because, I, you know, I've read the bylaws.
You still need to file an OSRD when you do the definitive, which is not gonna file a definitive conventional.
Right, but ultimately, it's our choice.
It is.
Say that again, Helen.
It, this is a preliminary, right, it's informal, everyone agrees to that. But it's, we, we, because of the lot sizes, I understand it, you, when you file your definitive, you still almost need to have an OSRD to prove that you've gone through this process.
Gotta show the whole design process, and prove the design process, where, of identifying the primary conservation areas, the secondary conservation areas, working with landscape architects, so that you show how you fit each one of those lots in avoiding everything.
And that, that's all on the ordinance, you.
Yeah, you've got that.
You stand for both an OSRD and for a conventional?
You have to present both plans.
Right, right, but you don't have to do full engineering for both.
I hope not. Actually, I hope so, I wish you would. Take that back.
So you just want a, uh, sort of a preliminary design of a open space residential?
The, the concept.
Right.
Plan, right.
Right, pretty much, we have that.
And you might find that, that might save you a ton of money, development-wise.
How do you say, why do you say that?
Because you might be showing a shortened road without your bridge.
I'm not really following you on that. You mean, you might change your mind, is that what you're saying?
Might need to, we, we need to see what the yield plan is.
The, the yield plan on the conventional is whatever we willing to risk it to be, I mean, that's, I don't think there's any, we don't have to prove anything other than, we have to do that preliminary that you just spoke about, but other than that.
I think it'd be helpful for the, I think writing that and providing it to the board would be helpful for the board to have in confidence, say, yes.
I think the board knows, though, ultimately, you know, rather than beating around the bush, Conservation's probably gonna deny me that crossing, and I'm gonna have to go to court, so rather than, why go through the whole exercise, wouldn't it be simpler just to say, you know what? Rather than them denying you and, and going to court, and you probably, we believe will prevail, w- we, we are more interested in preserving open space, and we're more interested, so we would, we'll work with you on the, you know, the road halfway through. Don't you think that makes more sense?
I don't think it'll prevail.
I don't think it'll prevail either, but that's neither, neither.
Yeah, it's pretty tight, the most stringent well on regulations.
I, I, the, the last thing, and the last thing I wanna do is put on the table the discussion of going to court and negotiating, if you don't go to court, we're gonna put in half the way, so that's the last place.
But I, you're gonna understand that, that's the, I'm just laying the cards out, that that's the process that would, it's just, you know, that's the process we'll have to follow.
If you choose to, that's your choice.
Well, I'm not, if we're denied the crossing, that's all.
I'm just saying.
Not that we choose, so I don't choose that, believe me.
Okay, so, let's, I think.
Really glad we had the opportunity to give you as much feedback as we.
I appreciate it, though.
I think we, I think we have, pretty much.
I think it's time to move on, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Do you wanna provide the documentation to the board in another meeting, get the board to give you a, a full impression of which plan they preserve, or do you have enough to proceed?
I don't think they have, they can't do that yet.
What? All right, well, I'm just going by this, so. See preliminary feedback from the planning board and/or its technical experts, set a timetable for submittal of a formal application.
Right, so it's basically saying, do you wanna set a timetable for a formal application?
Do you wanna come back with information, or do you want a timetable when you're gonna come back with a formal application? Does the planning board wanna get any technical review input on the pre-app material that was presented here?
Can wait until we see a formal, I, I'm, I'm thinking at this point.
All right.
We'll just wait to get the technical involved if a formal act is submitted.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, let's see, new business, Howard, Park and Rec Greenway presentation, you have one?
Well, uh, Park and Rec responded to the board's request um, to come in and present their long-range plans of, um, recreational open space in town. And unfortunately, they couldn't make, uh, tonight's meeting, they requested that their presence be continued to the twenty-seventh. Provided in the packet, um, electronically wasn't colored, but the hard copy was in black and white.
It's useless.
Yeah.
Just looked at it, it's useless.
But.
It's all color-coded.
Was, was their Greenway presentation, which involves, uh, parcel F, as well as the recently permitted parking wreck land behind New Life Church. So.
Okay.
We can make it for the twenty-seventh, or we can make it for the first meeting in June, but I believe that they could do it for the twenty-seventh of May.
As, as an interesting note, uh, I might point out that I believe the selectmen have invited the planning board and the Park and Rec and the Conservation Commission to join them at their meeting on the eighteenth.
Let's, uh, do two things, there's, I think there's two issues here, one is, one is, uh, what you're just bringing up, which is the selectmen's hearing, which is to talk about this on the eighteenth. Um, but I'd like to, before we go past Howard's, um, just moving the presentation from Park and Rec, um, I'd like to address that issue, get that one off the table, and that was for a couple of dates you threw out.
Uh, the second meeting in May, which is the twenty-seventh, or the first meeting in June, which is the tenth.
What would be the best one, from your point of view?
Well, you can do the twenty-seventh, that wouldn't be a problem, there's only one public hearing scheduled for.
You guys open at the twenty-seventh, sounds good to me.
If it works with Park and Rec, it works with me.
All right, so.
And you mentioned they happen to meet at the same time.
Yeah, they're, they're meeting right downstairs, right, every time we have a meeting is the same. Absolutely, that, oh, that's why they, we can never seem to get them yet, yeah, yeah, they're downstairs right now. But they don't have the benefit of an agent, they're all volunteers, so, all the paperwork that our office does for the planning.
I'll, I'll send them an email, say you want the twenty-seventh or the tenth.
What can we, what can we do to help them present to us, and is there something we as a planning board can do to help them, considering, you know, we're meeting at the same time, they don't have an agent working for them, I'm just trying to ask a what-if question.
Could we start our meeting a half hour late and go down to the, go down to theirs and have us be the first thing on their agenda that week?
I love it, I love it.
That'd be a good idea.
I love it.
Does that work?
Uh, no.
Doesn't. Why?
Because of the time, so you've continued these public hearings, too.
Okay, well, what if, what if?
The planning board can meet downstairs from six-thirty to, to seven.
Okay.
And then come up here.
I don't think they begin their meetings.
Until seven.
Seven or seven-thirty, I don't know.
So.
Well, okay, so then, so then what if then either we schedule a meeting where we begin at six-thirty, to give them an opportunity, or they schedule a meeting to start at six-thirty, and we show up there for a half an hour early, let them choose.
How about we have Howard communicate with the chair, or you communicate with the chair directly, and find a.
I'll communicate with Park and Rec.
A period of, of time when we can both meet together.
Well, I.
Get, get a coordinated meeting, so that it's not inconvenient for us, it's not inconvenient for them.
Well, I think, yeah.
Maybe we can do a joint meeting.
Well, that's what I just said.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's coordinated, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so that, getting together, you'll have a discussion with, um.
Jim DeBento?
Jim DeBento, and, uh, we could meet half an hour early, or they can start their meeting, you know, we all can meet a half an hour early, and they can come up here, we can go down there, um, it's fine with me.
I think we might have a chance to talk a lot.
Is that okay with you guys, though?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the date was?
No date picked, yet.
Either the twenty-seventh or the tenth.
And it might be just one of those reasons that not everybody can make it, but that's okay, we do the best we can.
And, and regarding the whole Greenway presentation, I included in the meeting supplement tonight a, a copy of an email from, um, the Town's Legal Council to the, uh, Town Administrator, regarding, uh, parcel F, uh, the turning leaf subdivision.
We've seen this before, right?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, this is dated March twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Just for the board information, 'cause it's a follow-up to the whole situation that happened during the, um, it's part of the Greenway. And then during the recent annual town meeting, there's a lot of discussion about parcel F, and Harry mentioned that the board, and I'll be attending the meeting of the selectmen next Monday on the eighteenth, to find out what happens with the parcel.
And to, um, to, to that, uh, the meeting on the eighteenth, um, I'm gonna be in Chicago, otherwise I would absolutely be there. Um, and, uh, I will, I'm sure, um, write my own, um, memo or letter, um, either, uh, I'll write it as an individual, um, but I'd like to talk, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about this Greenway presentation, um, from Park and Rec, and this parcel F issue, um, and this, and what happened at Town Hall, uh, Town Meeting, um, in the, in, um, this last-minute, um, surprise that, that came up to the floor, where the selectmen, um, uh, decided that they would, uh, uh, take the, uh, the issue and determine amongst them, amongst the selectmen, they would determine where jurisdiction should fall. And what was, what was disturbing to me about that, uh, action at that meeting was, A, the last-minute nature of it, B, I totally understand the selectmen are trying to do what they think is in the best interest of the town, I get that, and I'm not questioning that. But what happened was, it was the exact same, uh, procedural move that happened with the New Pembroke School. And you may or may not recall, with the New Pembroke School, the building committee, uh, took a vote to have the planning board review the project. Um, the building committee was surprised that the vote turned out to say, yes, the planning board, we authorize you guys to review this project. The building committee then, I've actually heard some people describe it as an unfortunate experience, well, it was a lot more than unfortunate. I obviously have some strong feelings about it, um, they actually took a second vote, had other people show up to the meeting that weren't present for the first vote, and they got a different vote, so that it didn't go to the planning board. And I remember some of the selectmen speaking up very strongly, very clearly, with whom I agreed, which was, if you don't want the planning board in town to do their job, then get rid of them. If you're going to, if you're going to, and they were in support of the planning board reviewing it. They were saying that if you've got a planning board, um, and typical protocol and procedure for such a big project is to review a school project such as this, then you may not like what they have to say, but you follow it. Well, the end-around that the building committee did that night, or the next meeting that they had, is the exact same thing that happened with this parcel F at the Town Hall. And that the fear of one organization, that Conservation Commission is not going to, um, give them the answers that they want for what they think is in the best interest of the town, and I don't question their, their motives at all, um, they absolutely believe it's in the best interest of the town. Because of that concern, this end-run of taking it out of Conservation Commission's hands and putting it into the selectmen's hands happened at the last minute, I have a real problem with that. And I'm sorry that I'm not gonna be at that meeting, um, and I will write a letter, but I would like to talk about that with the planning board, um, now, tonight, uh, as this is part of the agenda item, as to, you know, hear what you guys think in terms of this issue, of who should have jurisdiction of, um, this parcel F. I originally voted, um, not knowing the bigger picture, I originally voted with the board, and I think Tilly did an admirable job in hindsight, trying to get the board to understand what Conservation Commission was talking about. And the general consensus of the board at that point in time was not really hearing what she was saying, um, and believing that, um, the planning board could go ahead and continue with the approval of Turning Leaf, and this land that was mitigation did not have to go to Conservation Commission and could stay, you know, under the purview of the town. After that vote, what I've come to learn is that there's this whole Parkway Green Belt idea taking place. And that, um, while they may be great ideas, and while they may be, in, in some people's mind, the best interest of the town, I've come, I've come to learn that, that that was part of the reason for driving the, the vote in that direction. I've also come to learn that, um, Conservation Commission has historically consistently, um, been responsible for that land. Um, and the fact that they didn't do this legalese dotting of the I, crossing of the T, and their written order of conditions say that, yes, this is ours, their meeting minutes, according to Steve Przemski's notes, um, are very clear, where it says, um, the main issue is the ConCom's intent was that the land will be protected under the care and custody of the ConCom. This was very clearly stated in the minutes, and also in past minutes for this project, but did not get clearly captured in the final vote. I, I, it brings me back full circle to, if we don't like ConCom, then get rid of the damn board. If we don't like the job they're doing, then get rid of them, if we don't like planning board, then get rid of them. But we have a procedure, we have a protocol, we have a series of checks and balances in the town, where the board should be allowed to do what they've been charged to do, and Conservation Commission has a very important job to do. Um, they're looking at a long-term picture of water quality, of, um, endangered species, of, um, on and on it goes. And the idea to take it out from their purview and have the town be responsible for this in a way that has, um, not been the case with, historically with Conservation Commission in the past, to me is a classic end-around, is a classic lack of boards talking, is a class, a classic, um, uh, personal agenda of one group trying to get something through, and, and, and I'm really disappointed that, of, of all that, that I've now learned about the whole project, um, whether or not I agree with the project. So that's my take on it, that's where I stand on what I think the board should be doing as a planning board in support of the Conservation Commission, and going to talk to the selectmen, and I would like to hear what the other board members, uh, think. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, um, one of the underlying themes of this is, when it comes to the, uh, to the Greenway, Green Belt, whatever it is.
Green Belt?
Green Belt?
Is that?
Greenway.
Greenway. So what's the overall plan, what's the plan, what's the idea here, what, what parcels connected to do what? Without a bigger picture, then it becomes ad hoc and, uh, make it up as you go along. And there might be a big picture back in somebody's mind, but this is the town, this isn't somebody's little private playground. So I, I, I think, aside from the question of who gets parcel F, it's what, as you were implying, it's what's the point of all of this? What's the point of having a ConCom, is it to own property? Is, it's to protect property? But again, I, I, I like the idea of executing a vision, developing plans off of, of a larger vision. Why, why are we doing a Green, Greenway?
Where the boards are speaking together.
Right, and, and it, the thing is, it'll only work if the boards are speaking together. We don't, as you again imply, we don't all have to agree a hundred percent on everything, but we've got to at least know what's the idea, so.
Knowing nothing about the issues at the time, at the, at the time of meeting, what I was very disturbed by is a, a selectman reading the motion, not making any comment, public comment, that, oh, by the way, we're changing a major portion of this. And then just letting, if, if somebody hadn't caught that in the audience, it could've just been passed without any comment whatsoever, without anybody understanding that that had, that a major change had taken place. I think in the interest, and, and this is not particular to the gentleman that did it, it sounds like the, the selectman had decided to do it that way. I think in the interest of, forgive me for using a big ideal here, but in the interest of democracy, if you're gonna present something to the town and have changed a major portion of, from what's written, I think it's appropriate to say, and oh, by the way, this is a major change, a major division from. I think it's appropriate to say, and oh, by the way, this is a major change, a major division from what we've written here. That is what I just took sitting in the audience, that you've gotta be kidding me, they've, they've just changed this all around without even having the, the, a- and I don't wanna use any kind of, of-
All good intentions.
All good intentions. Without having the honesty of saying, this is what we're doing, we're changing this for a reason, but we're changing it.
I, 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 I'd be the last person to jump to the, the defense of the, the selectmen. I, I don't even remember who made the motion, to be honest with you, so, late night. But I can tell you, the, what, what you're seeing here, this email and this opinion from Mr. Eichmann is basically to my, from what I've been led to believe, the sum total of what the selectmen were presented when they were asked to put something on the warrant that night. It, it, it's a wonderful opinion, saying that basically neither the planning board nor the Concom has the ability or the right to demand that any developer donate land. And I believe what it doesn't include is what you mentioned, Rob, the order of conditions. And the fact that there was only one stipulation in the order of conditions from the Concom, which basically said that the open space needed to be deeded within a year. And it certainly, certainly did not reflect the decision from this board, which clearly recommended to the select board that this be municipal land held by the town. That was a recommendation. I don't believe the selectmen were privy to either one of those things. They were merely privy to this, and then presented at a meeting that night with this, decide warrants closing, hurry, hurry, and they did so. And so it sounds like what they did was, they took more information later.
It, it, it may be that the ultimate decision was completely justified, and I have no opinion one way or another on, on that whatsoever.
It's a process.
It, it's a process question, and I felt, I felt as a, as nothing more than a, a community member sitting in the audience, a little duped, to be quite, to be quite honest with you. That if there wasn't that, frankly, that one woman that, and I, I don't know who it was, that stood up and said, wait a minute, that's not what this reads here, you've just changed it, was that intentional? I think if that comment hadn't been made, it would have been a perpunctory motion that would have, that could have elicited no discussion. And that major change could have happened without anybody even really understanding that a change had happened.
Where, where, where I'm going with all of this is I would like to, if at all possible, see if this board, I'm sorry, Tilly can't be here. But to see if this board would be able to somehow craft a short memo on behalf of the planning board for Howard to draft that would express our concern with the process, with the way it was handled. And then further, to make our recommendation as to who we think should be responsible for the maintenance of the parcel.
Parcel F.
Parcel F. What do you guys think?
Matt?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking around.
I just wanna point out that I think what was done at Town Meeting was done to allow for the process you're talking about right now. One thing about Town Meeting voters accepting land under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission is that it immediately becomes Article ninety-seven land. To change that use and allow it to go from conservation land to active rec or water department land requires literally a two-thirds vote of the legislature. It's an act of Congress. However, if it is not conservation land, if it's municipal land, and it's accepted by Town Meeting vote a- as municipal land, all you need to do to turn portion of that parcel or that parcel to the Conservation Commission is a Town Meeting vote. Was I clear on that? One way locks it up forever. So one way, you can lock it up, or you can leave your options open, and keep those options open until such time as you wanna lock it.
And you can divide that land and say, this is the part that's conservation land.
The sum total of what I'm coming with, because I think what I would, I, I would like to see, is I would like to see that parcel F. I'd like to see it left as municipal land so that the Water Department could have their fifty-foot wide access for the stub that heads out to Pillsbury, the water, we're looping the water out of two stubs. The stubs are already installed. Lou Mamolet was inspecting them the other day. The, the stub that goes out, you're gonna need something probably fifty feet wide, a fifty-foot wide access so that you can have a jack and pit, cause it's a wetland beyond, and you'll need that to, to do a directional drill. The other access, the other easement is already established. It goes between parcel eighteen and nineteen? Is it eighteen and nineteen off Lisa Lane?
Yeah.
Proposed. Goes up there. You might wanna have that not be conservation land, so that the Water Department might use that. And there is a section, and again, without, you know, graphics, it's tough, but there is a section of parcel F that you would want for access up through that accessway off of Lisa Lane. And then, so you could get to a parcel of land titled, called Assesses Map sixteen four. And the two parcels we just voted to, to purchase, which is sixteen six and sixteen seven. Those lead out to Martel Way and in that direction. So that the Greenway has a continuous belt, the Greenway, from East Main Street right up through behind, all through parcel F, and going out all the way to Martel, with Martel Park entrance. And unfortunately, the sad part is, you're absolutely right, there's no communication. And it doesn't appear as though that idea is presented anywhere, but unfortunately, it is. It's presented in the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And I don't know how to say this without sounding like I'm dissing them, but the Open Space and Recreation Plan has been in the hands of the Conservation Commission now for, I don't know how many months. And they have yet to send that off or review it in any way.
I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I totally agree with that it's in the Open Space and Rec Plan. I, I think conceptually, it's talked about there, Harry, but it's not at all laid out in specifics, and what we're talking about now, specifics, and there's so much room for interpretation of what, which way to go when you have to determine a specific, so I, I, I don't agree that it's laid out at all in the rec, in, in that, in that long-term plan. The, the two issues you talk about, as far as the Water Department line, you know, that, that, that is a, that is a public good. If it were determined to be a, a benefit to the town, I have all the confidence in the world that Conservation Commission is gonna work with them on, on putting a water line connection through. They've done it in the past. I have no reason to believe they wouldn't work with them again in the future. I see that.
I don't believe you can. It's change of use under Article ninety-seven.
I will get you the information where they have done it in the past, where they have worked with putting, connected with doing a water line or some utility line. I, I can off the top of my head.
The directional drill behind the well, the West Street Fields, those are Water Department land.
I will get you the information.
Okay.
All right, I will get you the information. I can't get, I don't, I cannot recall off the top of my head the specifics of it. But they have worked with the town before in, in land, conservation land, where they've had jurisdiction for the benefit of town for this type of a crossing, utility crossing. So I, I think that's a, I think that is just a, 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 I don't think that's an issue. I don't think that's an issue for Concom, if it were Concom's jurisdictional land. I think the issue is active versus passive. And I think people keep, continue to use this word, Greenway, green belt, which implies a passive connection. There's a big difference between passive connection, footpaths, trails, green belt, versus vehicular traffic. Big difference, and I think that's where the rub is coming in. And I think it has been, I, I don't, I don't, I, I wish that I shared the same feeling you did, that this was a way to try to find the right answer. I, I think this is a, I think this is a, an attempt to try to end run the Conservation Commission to get it, to go in this direction, so that the land will end up where it'll be active, an active passageway, some sort of vehicular passageway. And again, I don't know, because there's been no discussion about this. There's been no planning about this. There's been no presentations about this. So I, 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 I see the water line as something Conservation Commission would work with, and then if, if, again, it comes back to, if the town doesn't want Conservation Commission, this land was part of mitigation for Turning Leaf. It was part of the mitigation that they accepted as part of the Turning Leaf project. And to then take that land and further use it for more use, such as a passageway for some sort of vehicle, is counterintuitive to the whole notion of why you accept it in the first place. And so I, I'm not at all convinced, this isn't just trying to skirt Conservation Commission, and I'm hoping that the Planning Board will support that, that if you, if, that Conservation Commission, and, and I, and I, and in this letter from Eichmann, he, he talks about, he says, in some, in some, it's the last paragraph. In some, in my, first of all, the first three, four paragraphs, it's all legalese, it goes back and forth, and quite frankly, I take it, and I go, why can't they just make things life simple? But they can't. So then I go to the last paragraph.
Hey, that's the only way we stay in business.
I, I will say, he's very clear in item one, neither Concom nor Planning Board can require parcel F to be donated to enter the town. Neither of them can. Very clear. And then you go down to the last paragraph, which is, in some. In my opinion, neither the Conservation, Matt, you may be able to help here a lot. In some, my opinion, neither the Conservation Commission nor the Planning Board has a right to insist that parcel F be conveyed to the town for any purpose. Got it? The Conservation Commission may have the right to insist the maintenance of parcel F is open space is a condition of the order of conditions it issued for the subdivision. Although they must be prepared to prove this by reference of good evidence in the record, i.e., I'm suggesting meeting minutes. So if they have strong meeting minutes that says they approve this in that way, I'm reading this to say that he's saying that they do have the right to insist the maintenance of what it's to be.
Well, so I, I could have a totally incorrect interpretation of this, but what I'm sa- what I think that he's saying is that they can order it be maintained as, as open space, but not that it be ma- turned over to the town, to any department.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying too.
Okay, perfect.
And, and that's, that's what, that's what this is about.
But I don't see how that gets to your question about which department has to con- control it.
So how does that, how does it work where conservation land accepts the land and they are responsible for?
The care and custody.
The care and custody, is that the word?
Yeah, that's the phrase that a lot of people use, the care and custody of Concom.
So isn't, is that one in the same? I'm, I was assuming those are one in the same.
Yes, and then it becau- it's accepted at Town Meeting by Town Meeting vote, and then it becomes Article ninety-seven land, protected land.
Right.
If you wanna change that use.
It's hard to do.
It's damn hard to do, and you have to pretty much replace it in kind now.
But I guess my question to you would be, if, if the, if the town and the, the selectmen and their wisdom have decided that the selectmen are gonna have care and custody of it and use it for open space, even though it's an order of conditions, I don't see how that, that the one of the damn boards insisted upon. I'm not sure that that gets to the issue of who has to maintain the care and custody of the land.
Or who can determine?
Or who gets to determine who has care and custody of the land.
Okay.
I think that the order of condition can specify that it has to be that, but then it's silent as to what happens from there.
Bearing in mind that the order of conditions did not specify it.
Right, that was the whole issue.
In fact, reading the entire order of, order of conditions, there were even no findings about the value of having that land as conservation.
And, and in the, and in their defense, and in their defense, I don't think, from what I understand, is that it was an oversight to not write it in the order of conditions, although they talked about it ad nauseam during the meeting. And it's in the meeting minutes.
I haven't read the minutes.
Well-
I haven't read the minutes.
So I'm just saying that, that, that's the other half of that picture. So I, so how to wrap this up, or, or how to, I, I think, I think the discussion of it, I think the discussion of it is good, I think it's important. I think there's a procedure, protocol issue going on here that concerns me. That's probably more of an individual, you know, personal response that I have with the selectmen. But as far as the Planning Board is concerned, wh- what is, what is the Planning Board's position as they go forward? Are they going forward as individuals to this meeting? Are we going forward as a unified group to this meeting? That, that this land is, is, is gonna be possibly available to active recreation? Or, or what the Conservation Commission originally was thinking of?
I, if I may, I, I, I see a solution where all parties are satisfied. Because the selectmen were prudent enough to not lock it up under Article ninety-seven, they keep it in an open state where you could subdivide it in any way that you can come to any kind of solution with, and once that subdivision is made, you could A and R it for this board if you wanted to.
Right.
And, and then-
But that takes the-
The parcels and the conservation link can go to the Conservation Commission, the Water Department link can go to the Water Department. And the open space, the, the active rec, open space can go to the parking rack.
Exactly.
And that only has to go to a Town Meeting in the future.
Exactly, but then by breaking it up like that, you're circumventing the Conservation Commission's traditional role for that land that was accepted as part of the mitigation for Turning Leaf.
Well, how do you, how do you?
By breaking it up and, and-
Did, did you read our decision? Our decision said, recommended that-
And I, and I said, I made a mistake on that vote after I've learned what I've learned since then.
Oh, okay, okay, well, you have the right to change your mind.
That's right, when I get new information, I do, yep.
But I, I think it's important to the town as a whole that we went to great lengths to make sure that those two stubs existed, so that we can loop this water, if the Water Department has the money.
Waters and water, and waters and water. Waters are not, water is a, waters are, is a, is, is, is being waived as an issue. I don't see it as an issue. I don't see that as changing anything.
But I, I guess my question then would be, so would you, so, so based on, so, so the, the, the point of your, that I'm missing from your, from your premise perhaps is, is it your point that if we allow active ver- uh, active use, so for example, a road, that, that wouldn't count as mitigation towards the Turning Leaf? And I can see ways that, that a, an access road, for example, would still count. I could s- can still conceive of ways that that is mitigation to a development. Are you, is your premise that, that you can't? Is, is that what you're saying? I mean, I, I guess I'm-
I thi- that's a great question, thank you. I think, I think that is what I'm saying. I, I think what I'm saying is that there was an understanding, an honest understanding between the board of the Conservation Commission. And Tilly tried to bring, do you remember, she tried to bring this into the meeting that night?
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, she tried to bring it into the meeting, anyways. And they accepted the parcel of land as mitigation for the Turning Leaf project. And in so doing, they were thinking that this was passive, recreation, if anything, in terms of footpaths. And that's it.
All right, so I, I'm not sure if you're familiar, there's a, there's a park in, in Hamilton. Not gonna be able to think of the name of it now, but they have essentially access roads that go throughout the park, that vehicles are, you know, vehicles are used for maintaining the roads and maintaining the, but it's a, a, a great park for, for, you know, walking and jogging and walking your dog and et cetera, et cetera. So to me, those two things are not necessarily inconsistent, maintaining it for, for offset of a, a, a development. But also, you know, using it for things that might be, might occasionally have vehicles on it. Now, obviously, that's a different scenario than creating, you know, road, you know, interstate highway ninety-five, you know, access, access road for ninety-five. So I, I guess it would depend on what they're- So I I guess it would depend on what they're talking about for, for what that active use would be.
Well, I I think it's the difference of crossing a wetland where you have a road and you have to do that work versus um a footpath. It's five feet wide and made out of mulch and, or it's on a, or it's on a wooden deck where you sink the posts into the. You know, into the muck and and you disturb absolutely minimum and you just can't do that with a road.
Care, Concom has care and custody over Camp Den, but I mean, there's, there's a lot of wetland crossings there. That they've permitted for roadways and culvert repair. And I mean, the the idea that a natural preserved area shouldn't be accessible. On anything uh by by anything other than foot traffic is, I don't know, it 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 sort of runs against the grain of common sense.
Is is other park and rec land in this greenway gonna be accessed with vehicles?
Totally disagree with that statement.
Is it's, is this greenway gonna have other land that's accessed or currently accessed by vehicles?
I don't see how you can avoid it. I mean, if if you're active recreational, and I mean, this board will.
And and.
Have that, I mean.
I kinda asked a wee to that, Harry, it's, there's, I I don't think soccer fields could fit on parcel F, but.
Oh, no, not on parcel.
But the whole, there there's so many unknowns that no, hasn't been clearly stated. What Concom would do if it was under the care and custody or what they wouldn't do? If it went under the juris- under ownership of Park and Rec, what Park and Rec had thought of, what it would be used? In my, you you put back the idea of this is a planning board and you accepted this land. As mitigation for a subdivision and made the recommendation of what you would like the land to be to the selectmen. And. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board are equals, they're peers in that way with what they do with the land. They don't become peers because the Planning Board can't accept the land themselves. The Conservation Commission can. Is the Planning Board acting, and Park and Rec would take the land, but they're not a permitting entity. So you've got, all these people need to get into the room and have it discussed with the selectmen of what the land. Was envisioned when the Planning Board accepted this or made the recommendation, what they envisioned it would be. Conservation Commission, what they envisioned it would be, but. I think the Planning Board's almost done entirely their job in in accepting the land, reviewing the deed. And making the recommendation to the selectmen.
I I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on record as with the selectmen, letting them know that I've changed my opinion.
Yeah.
Even though it's not a vote and whatnot, but I I'm gonna let them know and why. Um but I just need to hear it there. I I agree with you, everyone does need to get in the same room.
Because there's so many, they're they're even, in, it started a while ago, Rob, when, what is open space? Right? It's not clearly defined where where the open space is in the Planning Board.
Well, I, maybe that's the crux of it. Maybe the state doesn't define or see too much of a real difference. Between active recreational land and passive recreational land. Maybe because it's all open space and maybe we're all just getting a little too sensitive about. Uh the idea that this is passive and this is active. Um I I see it as, this is protected. All of it's protected. It's all.
Harry.
To the, to the inhabitants of the town of Georgetown.
Pret- and so that's fine, but then you gotta talk about protected from what?
Development.
That's it?
Not gonna be a Walmart.
No, no, I think that there's more than that, and I think that that goes to what what Rob was talking about, about the difference between. A trail and um, there's a term for it, where there're just two ruts. Where a vehicle has gone through.
Fire road or something.
Something, something like that, across from um the 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 church. Going into the um uh Georgetown Rally uh State Forest off of East Main Street.
Right.
Um there are se- there's sections.
Pingree.
Pingree Farm Road.
Pingree, no, Pingree Road.
Right.
Now, Pingree Farm, Pinky, I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I know exactly what you're talking about, that axis.
Right, right, it's a trail, but it has um uh tracks. Um if we had a full vision of what they had in mind, then we could say. Does, do they need parcel F for vehicular access? They're gonna need vehicular access, I think, because it's a long stretch, somebody could get hurt in there. Um you bring in your ambulance motorcycle, I don't know how you would do it. The the other thing in terms of protected is at Martel Way. There is a great blue heron rookery up there that must be protected and protected for more than development.
Now, where there's another blue heron? Chaplain Hills. Saw my very first one circling around when we were doing the uh for setting it in that place. No, further north.
Well, you know, I don't think you're gonna get consensus among the Planning Board, an- anything more between.
I digress, I digress.
I I I.
It's, it's, the only thing I could say is the Planning Board can only fall back to the, what was decided when they accepted the parcel and what was written.
Well, let me, let me just be very clear with everybody. When you say the Planning Board, I want it to be known and and express that Robert Hoover, who voted for that. Has changed his mind.
Mm-hmm.
Uh based on.
Information that came from.
Now have, that I did not have at that time. Um so, for what that's worth. But I agree, we're not, I mean, we're not gonna, I think the discussion's great. Um I think everybody being in the same room is great. I wish I was gonna be there. Um I'm not, um and uh, you know, I hope you guys all can make it. I I I guess I'll just end on plea, a plea to the other boards um that are involved with. You know, if I had a magic wand, um Park and Rec, Planning Board. Um all of those groups that, you know, were involved in uh developing projects in town, you know, highway. Um GAA, um you know, I wish there was this sense of we were working together. Versus in our own individual camps, um and we understood on this particular example what the big master plan was. What the intent was, what the roads were gonna be, not gonna be, um so that we all could be pulling in the same direction versus these last minute. Things that happened in town hall meetings and, but that's been going on forever.
Maybe what we really need is something like the rec path, like the recreational path. Something that pulls in a member of this board, a member of the Open Space Committee, a member of Conservation, a member of um.
Park and Rec.
And a couple of citizen players. It puts them all as a um committee appointed by the Select Board. Maybe that's the solution, because then, um and I modeled it from CPC because by having so many. Interlocking people on the boards, the information disseminates more effectively. It it really does.
Well, I I'm, I'm open to talking about any way to improve the.
Can't get any worse.
Thank you all for for that discussion, I really appreciate it.
Do we discuss Camelot before?
Old business Camelot, Howard.
Uh, thi- this has been a a long process of. To review it, um Camelot Realty is the entity that developed Whittles Hill. And they have requested release of um all the remaining funds out of their tripartite uh a- agreement. And um, which is about twenty-five thousand dollars. So I've gone around to all the various departments that would be included because per the 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 uh tri- tripartite agreement. All the conditions of all the permitting agencies all need to be met. So uh I've given about eighty percent of of the final effort here is is done. The last twenty percent is what, formulating what is remaining as outstanding. And then coming up with a cost associated with with that. The problem I'm running into is that there is disagreement about ownership and maintenance of some things. Um who's responsible for the roadways and cleaning out um the culverts? And who is responsible for cleaning and maintaining stormwater management systems? An entity believes it's been turned over to the condo association and the condo association believes it has not. Um some maintenance is ongoing, some maintenance is not done, so. The final effort here is to say, okay, no, it has not been turned over, or yes, it has. If it's gonna get turned over, this work needs to be done. If it's turned over, then the bond doesn't apply. It's up to the HOA, so.
Yep, what's the schedule for that?
Want the board to look at it, this is where we're at. I've had the site inspecting engineer go out, he did a report. All these other departments, and now I need to go through all this and say this is what's outstanding. For instance, it's gone down to the level of detail where the tripartite agreement in stating that all. Aspects of the permit need to be satisfied. Um it took me several months to collect all the information that the affordable housing component's been met. Except for one lot of the forty-two, and I haven't been able to track it down, so I need to go back to Camelot Realty and say. Provide me proof that this one final payment's been made and I can check it off. So, um those, that's the aspect that it needs to go through. If it hasn't been satisfied, then two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars needs to come from either Camelot Realty or the bond. If the road hasn't been turned over, then uh you know, there's repairs that need to be made to the road. The culverts need to be cleaned out, because they haven't been cleaned out in several years. Um and the function is is questionable about the stormwater retention basins around some of the things. There's three, four years of overgrowth.
I I haven't, I I was looking at the Form J, I I didn't see a sign off from Concom.
No, Concom says uh there's a few aspects that uh the order conditions that need to be closed before they can sign off.
Oh, okay, so do 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 we have it in writing what those all are from them?
The, he gave a a general summary, I believe I I provided that.
Okay.
Um but that's the next step.
Yeah.
Exactly. Concom, what needs to be done?
So is, so what are, what what is the Planning Board's next step with this then? Are we waiting to hear from you?
You 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 reviewed this and and you gave me questions, and the next thing is I'm letting you know I'm gonna summarize all this down into a report for the board to understand. What's outstanding, what needs to be uh.
Okay.
Done to satisfy not only the Planning Board's decision, but the tripartite agreement.
Um with respect to turning over the maintenance to the homeowners association. How is that done? Is that something that, I mean, that there has to be paperwork involved in?
And I can't find it. I, and what happens is, or as I understand, what was meant to happen.
Okay.
Is when the developer turned over to the HOA. Maintenance responsibility, if that did happen, there was meant to be money that went along to establish uh a a setup. Whatever it was for for discussion purposes, the agreement may have been to the HOA. Fifty thousand dollars, set up, here you go, now you have the ability to maintain, in the same way that happened with the sewer treatment plant.
I was just gonna say this, I remember something years ago, that was a treatment plant that was supposed to be in escrow town, that was supposed to have been established.
And there was.
It was, okay.
But then it has been told and discussed that it wasn't enough.
Howard, do you provide any um guidance in terms of, so this is a pretty thick chunk of material. For the Planning Board members to, when we're going through this, like, wha- what are we looking for in here? I mean, I'm, I, when I go through it, I'm reading a lot of things and.
Well, there's a Form J that that's kind of, that's the guiding document.
Where where is that?
It's right in the beginning.
That's what I'm looking.
So what I, what I did was I, I said, here's correspondence, here's the developer's request. Uh for all the funds and then they started going through.
Right.
There's a copy of the decision, it's all, this is a comprehensive.
Got it.
It's a copy of the decision, the tripartite agreement, and then the Form J that's in here is what. As you can see, goes through with the different sections. Form J comments, eleven, Planning Board. There's even something about the Planning Board requires a certain amount of trees in each lot to be put in. And some of those trees aren't put in. Now I need to say, okay, they're not in these lots, who's responsible for putting them in? Because somewhere along the line, the lots were transferred to the people that purchased. And the people that purchased said, I don't want the trees, the developer didn't put them in.
Right.
So there needs to be something that says.
Little game that was played.
Right. So technically, he hasn't satisfied it.
Right, right, okay, alright.
But if he can provide some.
When do you need these comments back by?
Just review it and say, I'm too confused at the next meeting. Or or I have a question.
Why don't we save some time here and I'll just tell you.
But for the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Cause at the next meeting, I'm also gonna have a little bit of a report.
Ken, would it be of any benefit to uh contact the uh the homeowners association? And ask them if they have a list of things that, to their knowledge, aren't done yet?
Well, I'm gonna contact them once, cause I have all my questions and the board's questions formalized. Because I can contact them right now and say, who owns the road?
Right.
Is is it the homeowners association, because it's not a public road?
Right.
Or is it still under the ownership of the developer? And there's finger pointing going on.
Uh huh.
And I'm like, you gotta show me a proof of the transfer. Because if it hasn't been transferred, this work needs to be done.
It sounds as though the developer would need to show proof that it was transferred.
Yes.
If the homeowners association, yeah.
Alright, moving on to um member or public reports. You guys all set to move on to the next item? Alright, member or public uh report, nothing from the public. I think the only thing that I wanted to add was uh Tim Howard. Um thank you, Tim. Eleven years of incredible amount of work, seriously, thank you. Planning Office, Elm Street.
Elm Street, Planning Board requested I contact Peter Dirkie about Elm Street, and Peter tells me they're at uh almost sixty percent design.
Thirty.
Um.
You wrote that.
Did I write thirty? It thirty, I'm sorry. Um and the next step is is um for uh, they're gonna have some public outreach meetings. So residents in of Georgetown as well as residents of Elm Street have a chance to see what the design is.
Will they let the, will he let the boards know when those meetings?
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be well advertised.
Alright, okay, great. Um if you could ask him for when it gets to that point, to just get a set of plans for the board.
Mm-hmm.
To have, to review, um just one set, that'd be great.
And in talking with the highway surveyor, I also mentioned the spot restaurant. And uh I'm waiting for the the operator of the spot restaurant to call me.
Okay.
So uh he and I and Peter Dirkie can go out and say, this is where it's meant to go.
Okay, as far as the the.
The boxes with the trees?
Yeah, the the tree pit location.
And the idea is to get them as big as we possibly can.
Yeah.
Good, great, and then dig out.
There there was even some discussion of um when I talked to the attorney for the spot. Well, they're all set to put a tree in, but they went out there and the tree had been cut down and the tree pit had been built with concrete. Well, yeah, because where the tree's gonna go in, that's on your plan, is not the same spot. So it just needs to be the winter, it's come and gone, it's time for the tree to go back.
And so hopefully um it won't just be a little three by three, four by four square. Great. Alright, guys, um it's nine fifteen, good time, Harry?
Um, there was a lot of discussion uh recently about um. Changing at town meeting, changing the uh with a citizens petition or a petition that was submitted by the selectmen at the last minute there. Uh I I know a lot of discussion revolved around uh removing part of the bylaw that referred to the ten thousands, ten thousand square. Et cetera, et cetera. Um I I think there was some some mentions made uh where um. Um it's referred to as a forty R, uh forty R being uh something that the board many, many years ago. Uh brought to town meeting as a possibility. I don't wanna, I'd love to add to your plate.
I've already started looking at.
But you have started looking at it, is. But you have started looking at it, is is it our intent and goal? And are we agreed that what we're gonna try to do is dust off that forty R, hold a hearing prior to a fall town meeting and.
Won't happen for the fall, sorry.
Done, man, it's all done, it's all been done.
No, it it needs to be revisited.
God, I would I would, I would say.
Brought it once.
I would say, I would say this, that um.
I'll start doing it.
Oh my god, white out the date, man.
And you wanna know why, Harry, is because there's been. Changes in the last six years, because that's two thousand and nine, that I would like for this to really be updated to the historic. District designation, the 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 village center idea.
It covered historic.
What's that?
Protected historic.
Yeah, but it's it's a different.
Give it a give it a good read.
I I have, and and there's also to have a chance to redraw some of the 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 zone district lines. That split properties, their offsets as opposed to.
That's that's something else.
And I think it's a chance to kill a couple more birds.
Yeah, we don't need to kill a couple of birds.
I'm not gonna recycle the same plan.
Why would you recycle the same plan that failed, though?
Because it failed by two votes.
But I would I would.
And there was a lot of disinformation.
What I would, what I would add.
Plan, it was a good way to move forward, it allowed the.
It's a great plan.
It's a it's a great plan, what I what I would add is, I think um part of getting ready for next May for two thousand sixteen town meeting. Um I'd I'd like to be talking sooner rather than later, and I see this as one of the items that, you know, I I'd like to know um. Uh what ones we're gonna be working on um sooner rather than later and not wait till the end to 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 figure this stuff all out, but.
In the same context, I'm wondering uh about medical marijuana, are we gonna pick that up again, I mean?
That's done, done, that was approved at the town meeting.
I thought it was just the solar that was approved.
Solar was approved, medical marijuana the year before that.
Oh, it was the year before that?
And I think what you're you're thinking of is wind, but I think, just my opinion. The wind bylaw can take a backseat to a forty R and um. I love the idea that you're trying to square everything off for Merri Mac Valley so we have nice, pretty little lines and everything, but on the on the on the map, on the zoning map. Get the forty R through, Howard, please, that's that's the pri- that's the priority.
So I I I would I would say that that, you know, an agenda item is just making sure that we have, we know what we're doing as a board. Uh going into, you know, two thousand sixteen, whether it's the fall or or or, you know, next May, a year from now. Um that we know within the next couple of months what we're doing, you know, that we've identified our three, that we've identified our four, five, whatever. Bylaws, whatever we're doing.
I don't, I think it'd be beneficial too for the planning board to knock off a couple of issues with the subdivision regulations, which don't have to do town meeting.
So and keep reminding that we.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree, okay.
So.
Mister Chairman, I move we um adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
I could I could read that your eyes, you were.